Alley is noted on the plat. Indiana Code thirty-six, seven, three, dash, three states that addition plaits must show public ways, and those grants to the public that are noted as such on the plat are considered a general warranty. We purchased our property with the understanding of an obligation and agreement with the town council, or with the town of Seinsville, that the public alley would remain available for our use and benefit in perpetuity as it has been for more than a hundred years. The public alley was originally connected all the way through to Oak Street via north-south alley on the west side of the petitioner's property at nine-eight-five West Oak Street. Nine-eight-five West Oak Street created the dead-end alley as it exists today, when the owner of that property petitioned the town council to approve an ordinance to vacate that north-south alley. We were not notified by mail of that petition. Had we been notified, we would have formally remonstrated at that time because dead ends are specifically prohibited in Seinsville Planning and Zoning Code one-nine-three-point-zero-five-two. Nine-eight-five West Oak Street created the dead end and solely benefits from that alley vacation. Therefore, nine-eight-five West Oak Street should bear the burden of the dead end where it exists currently today. Any traffic that ends up at the end of this unposted dead-end alley and needs to turn around should burden the driveway of the property that created the dead end. If you vote further vacate this portion of the alley, you will move the dead end to our property and will be forcing that burden upon us and our driveway. And more importantly, you would be burdening us by making access to our land difficult and inconvenient. We are strongly opposed to any plan or commitment that involves taking away our public right-of-way to have a private citizen manage the town obligation and responsibility to us. We request that you allow us more time after this three-minute request-to-speak statement to further explain the numerous negative impacts and burdens that would result for us from such a proposal or commitment. Because it is the town of Seinsville's responsibility and obligation to continue to provide and maintain the public right-of-way for access to our property, we are fully prepared to appeal to the courts and seek damages if you approve the vacation of our active public right-of-way. In addition to the three separate neighbors on our block that have formally expressed their opposition, the staff memo now reflects that the town does not encourage the approval of the PARS requested alley vacation. We commend the council members that voted to protect the interests of the public in this matter at the preliminary vote. We encourage our fellow Seinsville residents to take note of which council members vote to take away this public right-of-way from the public to give to a private citizen for their personal gain. We ask that each council member vote to deny the alley vacation at today's final vote. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Heather, Ms. Williams has indicated that she is going to take legal action on the town if the outcome doesn't go her way. Is there anything we need to handle this differently because of that?
No.
Okay, very good. Uh, second, we've got Chris Parr. Uh, I've got you, Jackie, if you'd like to go instead. Yeah, go ahead.
Good morning. Jackie Parr, nine-eight-five West Oak Street, Seinsville. We appreciate the town council's time today in speaking for the request of the vacation of the portion of the alleys between our two properties. Due to incomplete and inaccurate information provided during the previous hearings, with the help of our attorney, we have provided supporting legal documentation to provide clarity of those areas in question to allow for continued consideration of the vacation of the alley between our properties. It was alleged that both properties were illegally sold to us. You have been provided documentation on the vacation of those alleys located in each of our properties, showing then in fact those portions are inclusive in our properties and they're not public access. It was stated that nine-ninety West Pine had an existing deed restriction, bringing into question the ability to build on the lot. You were provided with documentation showing that nine-ninety West Pine was in fact a buildable lot since October of two thousand and seven, granted by the courts without opposition and sold as such four times. There was also the concern of an addition meeting form. We were informed the form-based zoning ordinance rewrite in two thousand and twenty is currently being worked on, but at the beginning stage of forming. Despite this, we reached out to Mark Walters, as you know, the chairman of the Historic Preservation Committee, as recommended by Wayne DeLong. Mr. Walters notified us at the time our nine-ninety West Pine Street is not in the Conservation District boundaries, and the intent was to stop at Ninth Street. However, he stated that even if the boundary included nine-ninety West Pine, the home at nine-eight-five West is not currently considered to be a historic property. So adding in addition to it would extend, and extending to Pine Street would not subject to any Conservation District oversight. An additional concern raised is adequate space for a driveway off of Oak Street. At the narrowest point, there is fifteen feet on the west side of nine-eight-five allowing adequate room for a driveway. Prior to submitting our request for the hearing of the vacation of the alley, we did reach out to the Williams and they did convey their opposition to the vacation of the alley, to which we attempted to alleviate concerns at that time without success. We still are willing to continue to offer an option to address a concern in regards to egress from their driveway, as you are aware. However, our decision to purchase nine-eight-five West Oak Street on getting approval was not dependent on getting approval of the vacation of the alley. We also bought it as an investment for our children, knowing both options were a sound investment. We worked with our builder on options to extend towards the Pine Street lot because we found this to be more desirable, providing more green space and addressing a concern of building five feet off of our nine-ninety, ninety, excuse me, Pine Street neighbor, causing their side porch to look into a home. Our desire and attention is to maintain the charm of the village, which we hope was conveyed in our drawings provided. Our builder has built in the village, lives in the village, and knows our desire to reflect the charm of the village.
Thank you, Ms. Parr. Mr. Parr, do you want to speak? Are you good? Okay, very good. I do not have any other requests to speak. Amy, anything else I'm unaware?
There are none either.
All right. Next up is the mayor administration update.
And we have updates.
No update today? Okay, well, let me look for one next time, maybe. Next, we've got old business. Old business, we've got a consideration of an ordinance vacating a portion of a public right-of-way. This is the Par request, an ordinance two thousand and twenty-one dash oh-seven. Roger, anything to add on this? You're listed as the contact here, so.
Good morning. Uh, the only thing of addition I'd like to draw the attention of the council to the additional information or updated information was provided within the staff report. I'll be glad to go into any additional discussion on that, but don't feel a need to read it through as it has been provided to you.
Very good.
Any questions?
Um, so clarification, we voted on this last time. This was just because of the two-step process, so any vote today would be what we consider the final vote. If it was a accept or deny, it could always be continued. Got Roger here, if you've got questions. The Williams are here, if you've got questions. The Pars are here, if you've got questions. Councillors, I'll leave it to you.
Um, obviously, I was, I was out last, last meeting. But I did make an effort to go out to the properties over the weekend, and I saw some spray paint in the alley. And I was just curious, I didn't, I got out with a tape measure and kind of measured it, and it was like a five-foot. There was a, two orange lines. Can you, can you maybe tell me what that was? Ma'am, please. What did that represent?
Okay, um, my husband and I originally went out and spray painted the line that would end where the alley would officially stop. That would be the line that is closest to our property. When we went back out to the property a couple of days later, we had noticed that someone, we assumed the Pars, had painted another line five feet to the west. We believe the reason why they painted that was because that's where their house would end and that the argument would be that we would actually be able to have that additional five feet to back out of our garage and then pull forward. However, um, we, as we said at the last meeting, the alley would vacate at that, that line that is closest to the east, leaving us zero feet of, um, clearance on, to the west because that would become their property. And we, we cannot back out, and it, we wouldn't want to back within, you know, feet, a couple of feet of their house. And they could put a fence right up on that most east-west line. So the line that you saw closest to our property, that is where the alley would end as it's written in the petition. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Roger, I guess this may be a question for you. As I've seen things, the Pars have, have offered to create, at this point, a concrete pad as a turnaround zone for, uh, Williams or anyone else to be able to get out of their driveway. And, and is that in what we're voting in? Or if we've vote, let's say we voted to approve today, how does that get tied into the commitment? It's not just sort of like a legal commitment that has to be then done in exchange, if you will, for this alley vacation?
Provide some comment, but then I'm going to obviously need to defer to council for this. As I understand it, an offer has been made presented by the Pars for this concrete pad area to be, uh, basically established as an easement that would be recorded on the plat of their lot, uh, that would, uh, so that would run with the land. I'll defer to council for any additional comments.
Yeah. Yeah, I think part of, um, some of the comments that I've, some of the council members have had is whether or not, you know, it's not, I don't think it's necessarily a commitment that we would see with like a developer because we do have a private citizen, so there would be some level of responsibility for the current homeowner to maintain it. But if it were not maintained, I'm not sure what recourse the town really has to, um, enforce that because we now have, um, you know, information on a private citizen, or, you know, a, a portion of property that's now in, um, responsibility of a private citizen. So to the extent that we would have something like, you know, snow removal or something like that, that is going to be their responsibility. Now, if someone could come back and could revisit this, but you, you know, it, it's not like a developer covenant per se, as you're used to, so.
If, if the.
And, and, you know, it's not my area of practice, I haven't been involved, this is administration matter, but like, is my understanding that's the case.
But because it's an easement, if the Pars sold their house.
It would run with the property.
Yes, the new homeowner couldn't come out and say, like, put a fence up in front of the turnaround area.
Exactly.
So my, my question was, I said at the Lance, could the Pars donate that piece of property to the town? And then it would be the town's ability to maintain that so that we don't have to worry about homeowner.
I don't think so because that's, I mean, kind of, we're doing a reverse now of that. And I don't know how you would do that given the property because you, I think you're going to have property on both sides. As I saw this, you'll have the alley right here and then you'll have property.
No, it would work perfect. And then the town would be, according to Lance, he didn't see why the town wouldn't take care of it. But.
It's probably on two sides, so you've got the alley on the front and the property on the left and the south side.
So I never got really a clear answer from Wayne, but Lance said he didn't see why that would be an issue. I wish, I was kind of hoping one of them would be here to kind of talk about that because that's a game changer for my vote.
Yeah, and that's not something I've researched, but I'm, you know, happy to do it, but it's not gonna.
And I guess could I ask the Pars to come up to, you talked to anybody about that? Has that even been a thought?
If you want to come with the lecture, I appreciate it.
It was mentioned, but no one at that time knew legally because we thought it was a reasonable option since we were getting a portion potentially of the alley, that that would be a reasonable land swap. But there was, again, we'd have to defer to our attorney to, I know that that was brought up as what would be the option, and no one knew at the time when it was discussed.
It would be that you would dedicate just the driveway portion back to the town.
About eight by fifteen.
Yeah, the eight by fifteen, yep. You're more than welcome to come up.
Um, thank you. We just, we wanted to have an opportunity, um, since the council had encouraged us to consider the option at our last meeting. Um, and we've come up with at least four very strong bullet points of why we do not want to have any part of that pad. The first, well, first of all, the size of the pad that they're talking about is a fraction of what we have available to us as a public right-of-way. So it's not, while you call it a land swap, it's, it's not the same thing. Nobody has looked at it from a safety perspective. Can a fire truck use that small pad to turn around? Can any other emergency personnel use that small pad to turn around if, you know, to service our lot? But the point that is most important to us is we do not want any part of using nine-ninety West Pine as anything other than what Mr. Burton specified when he donated the land in memory of his first wife Nancy to the Seinsville Board of Parks and Recreation. When he donated that land to the parks, he specifically restricted all of it in the deed to forever make for the purpose of Parks in Recreation. It is disturbing to learn of the unethical lengths the park board took to lift that restriction. We were not aware that that restriction was lifted because it wasn't recorded with the deeds. That the Parks Board literally sued the estate of Mr. Burton to have that restriction lifted is upsetting. That left his seventy-four-year-old second wife to either incur legal fees to defend that restriction. And, you know, in a court battle with the parks. So we just, we absolutely, we want to memory the honor of, of his wife and not use any portion of that property aside from what Mr. Burton intended when he restricted that land. And then just from a responsibility perspective, any reasonable person would choose to have the town manage their, um, access to their garage. No reasonable person would, would want a neighbor to manage that access and maintain that land. You know, it would, it would be difficult if somebody parked in it. I don't believe the Pars or the town or anyone is going to be back in that alley to make sure that someone doesn't see, oh, this nice spot that looks like a parking spot just to park in it. I can foresee many issues going forward, whether the town has responsibility of that small pad or the Pars. It is a burden to us to not have an alley that is clearly an alley to use for our public right-of-way. And then issue that we haven't.
I also just.
Yeah.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but, I mean, to be clear, we're not taking alley access away from, should this go through? I mean, the, the alley still exists. This is just simply a piece of that alley that extends west of your property that ends. We would, if this goes through, would be taking that alley and instead of ending it on the west end of the property next to you, we would just move it to the east end of the property next to you.
Right, however, that alley that is to the west of our property line is essential. I don't think anyone is arguing anymore that it is essential for our garage location to have that alleyway to back out, um, backwards to then pull forwards. It's not that we can't drive forwards into our property. We're not disputing that. We can easily pull from Ninth Street down the alley forwards into our garage. It's the matter of getting out. If we don't have that, um, alley access to the west, we can't back out. We will then be backing all the way out down the alley because we will not use that land.
Even if it's there, you won't.
We will not use it. It is wrong to use that land for any other purpose than what Mr. Burton specified in nineteen ninety-one.
All right, so I, I just want to make this, this clear. I, I thought you brought the most important point you brought up last time. I agree one-hundred percent with you. If it's someone else maintaining it, that's not the town, I agree, that's not, in my mind, that's not feasible. But we have worked really hard. Dr. Choi, um, and Vice President Plunkett have worked really hard, meeting with all the, the folks. And we may, I have no idea which way they're going, but I think your maintaining point is the only sticking point you have right now. The other stuff is peripheral, in my opinion.
Okay.
All right, so that's where I have a problem with this. In my opinion, for my vote, I need to know whether they can donate that and have the town take care of it. And I'll tell you right now, your service fee goal doesn't have anything to do with it because they have the same issue now is if that, that was moved or not.
Right.
Not be able to turn a fire engine around today, or if they, we approve this and they build over it.
Right, because their property vacated through alley.
But that.
And created that.
Nothing to do with this.
It's, I just want to bring it up. It's, it's an issue and it's a concern that it was a burden that was put on us by the property that there isn't a through, and to take more of that creates more of a burden upon our property.
So.
Yeah, also just, I want to clarify a couple of things that were stated because I just, I know there was some confusion on this at the last meeting, and Mr. Andrew really, I don't think, was able to answer it at the time, and we went back. So there's been a lot of conversation about this deed restriction with the property. And I think last time, um, you know, it was indicated in, in the conversation that this deed restriction still existed. And I know for many of you, that was a concern because obviously if the plan was restricted to park property, then we were not, would not be able to be a buildable lot. And so we needed to get that clarified. So following the last meeting, I did have conversation with Roger Burris, who is the attorney for the Parks Board. And, um, to give some perspective, Roger's been, you know, the attorney for the Park Board for many years, all the way back, that he was the attorney who actually worked with Mr. Burton on the original donation of the land to the Parks Board, uh, when the big four rail trail was going in. And so he did share with me that, um, you know, as they were looking at the expansion and the park priorities and sort of where the rail trail would, you know, end, and they, they did seek to have that deed lifted, the restriction lifted in two thousand and seven. So it's been on the books for some time now, and I did want to make sure that the council was aware there is no current deed restriction that that be used for park property. That's not something that's going to necessarily be reversible unless the Park Board, you know, took some other action. But that, that, that lot has been sold. Um, and so there, you know, there, there, there's no town obligation or even ability for the town to, um, impose any further restriction on that private property. So I think there's been some confusion, or at least I've heard some confusion in how that was represented to the council. And I just want to make sure that you all know that, that issue's been put to rest. Now, whether or not it was disclosed as part of a closing, I can't speak to that. Um, and would be something I'd go back to the closing, um, folks, you know, because obviously that's important. But for our purposes at the town, there is no deed restriction that has been clarified. Roger did indicate at the time that Mrs. Burton was served with notice and that they actually had no objection to the lift of that restriction for that particular parcel property. So he shared with me all of the original filing documents, and I reviewed them. And I wanted just to make sure that council was aware of that.
Heather, to, to be clear, that's, that is, that, that's not what we're discussing.
No, no, no. But it is important.
We're not voting on whether it's a buildable lot.
I think, I think you're right. It is important, though, for the fact that you can't go back now and make it park property again, is my point to you all. And so I know that that's been stated a couple of times, that it should be continued to be used for park property. But that is, that, that ship has sailed. So that's really the point I want to make to you. Not, not whether you choose to do this or not, that's your decision, but.
Well, Mrs. Williams is up at the lectern. Did, did you present a, um, a site plan or anything with your, with your blueprints of your home?
We did. We actually, I don't think, well, I guess in very fir, in our, I don't remember if it was in our first remonstration letter or if it was when we came back May seventeenth. But yes, we actually had to file for a variance. We, when we were under contract to purchase our lot, we knew that we wanted to have our house set more forwards towards Oak Street, that we didn't want to use Oak Street as our primary ingress egress because it is a primary arterial. It's not safe. We didn't want to have any of our children or guests, um, pulling in and using a driveway and then backing out on Oak. So that was really important to us, um, to have our garage set off of the alley. And in that site plan, um, for the varies that we submitted back in two thousand and four, we specifically outlined where our garage would be and where our home would be, and that there would not be a drive running all the way through to Oak Street. So truly, that garage is our only access to parking in our garage. Um, and that was set five feet from the west of our property line and five feet from the south of our property line.
Thank you.
Yeah. I do have just one other thing, um, as far as, uh, one, one other concern was the drainage. That's something we haven't talked about, but when we pulled the GIS, we can see our property is higher. The patrons that are directly behind us have a high spot. The Pars have a high spot, and the low spot is right where the alley would in, in vacate. The topography shows that that low spot currently drains kind of through the alley and across, down into the rail trail. So that is a concern that we have also looked at since our last meeting that we wanted to bring to your attention, that building across the alley with the building, um, parameters where you have the water runoff from the house, it will create a low spot right where the pad will, would be and right where our alley in the back of our property would be.
Okay, so, um, I'm ready to vote on this because we've talked about this for two hours now, I think. I feel that the Pars have offered up a lot of different solutions. Councils offer up a lot of different solutions. The Williams have always stated, to their credit consistently, that they don't want a solution, they just don't want, they wanted it to know. So I think at this point, you either agree with the Williams, you agree with the Pars. Does anyone disagree with this? I don't think we can solution this up here, I don't think.
No, but I, I do want to state just for, because I think, I, I, two hours, you're right, way too long on this. It, in my mind, it's a very simple thing. I think any resident that buys a house, um, should have some assurance that the town is not going to give away part of a, a public road to a neighbor to their detriment, perceived or real.
Sure.
That, that you ought to have some assurance that just because your neighbor wants that public land, that the town council is not going to give it. I've participated in many alley vacations and voted yes on the great majority of them, but they've, I, I don't recall any that have had any remonstrance. If the, if anybody had ever come up and remonstrated, that's a very simple no for me because it's, somebody has a perceived, uh, detriment by this vacation. So that's, it, you know, all the safety and all that stuff, it really never came into play for me. It was, it was strictly, look, this person has a perceived, um, detriment due to this alley vacation. And in my mind, it's a public road that perceived or real, why should we give one citizen a benefit of giving them land over a neighbor that has an issue with it? That.
I tend to agree.
I tend to agree with, uh, Counselor Trailer and, um, but the other comment, the second part of it is the main, if, if that gets, if this gets passed, that the maintenance of that piece of property that is still on the Pars' property, where that's in limbo. And that also creates a second question mark on top of what Counselor Trailer brought up.
Any other comments? Any motions?
Make a motion to deny.
You've got a motion to deny, Counselor.
Second.
Second from Counselor Melton. Amy, do you want to do a roll call on this?
Sure.
So just so, 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 clear, if you're voting yes, you are voting to deny. If you're voting no, you're voting not to deny.
President Garrett?
No.
Vice President Plunkett?
No.
Counselor Burke?
Yes.
Counselor Choi?
Yes.
Counselor Culp?
Yes.
Counselor Melton?
Yes.
Counselor Trailer?
Yes.
All right, motion denied passes, the vote of five in favor of the denial, two against. So that ordinance is not adopted.
We're going to be sending this, um, through, Amy, and I'll take a minute. But, um, to clarify, like, you'll, you'll be voting no on the ordinance, if you were a yes, that gets a little tricky, so.
No, that makes sense. It should be five no signatures.
Yes, and I'll, we'll check it, but just, it's a little bit tricky when we do it that way.
Very good. Uh, we've got one new business item here. This is a consideration of a resolution to opt out of opioid settlement pursuant to Indiana Code four-dash-six-dash-fifteen-dash-two. This is Resolution two thousand and twenty-one dash ten. Uh, I'm listed here as the owner of this. I'm not really the owner of this. This came to us from the administration. I did learn a little bit about this, but I really couldn't answer any questions on this. Vice President Plunkett was with me. The idea, he, I don't even actually want to say what the idea is here because I don't want to get this wrong. I believe either Amy Noonan or is Jonathan Knoll on the call? Joe, maybe if you could promote them both to speakers.
I am, yeah, good morning.
There you are, Jonathan. Jonathan, uh, do you want to introduce yourself and maybe tell council about what the concept is here?
Sure, good morning. My name is John Knoll. I am a local counsel, um, for the town of Seinsville. I'm a partner at Cohen and Malad, law firm in downtown Indianapolis. We, um, have been asked to join as local counsel, um, for the town and the opioid, uh, litigation. And it's in response to a statute that was passed, regarding the, uh, framework of potential future settlements that may be involving the state and also local, uh, cities and counties. Essentially, the, the statute provides, um, that cities and counties are parties to opioid lawsuits, uh, regarding defendants that the state has filed by July first. The town has sixty, however, the, the statute provides that the town has the option to opt out, by June thirtieth, by passing a resolution to opt out. The town may opt back in if it desires, uh, within sixty days of passing the resolution. Without going into any further details about the litigation or strategy, I, I'm happy to answer any questions about, about the, uh, about the legislation, but the bottom line is, i- if the town does not opt out, there's the possibility that the town may not participate in future settlements. there's the possibility that the town may not participate in future settlements because the town has sued other opioid manufacturers and pharmacy defendants that the state has not sued. Um, as well as um, if it stays in the statute, the state retains eighty-five percent control of how the opioid funds are allocated and distributed throughout the state versus if the town opts out, it, its claims go forward in the, in the, in the court system and it, and uh, and it retains some control of, of how potentially future settlements may um, may be allocated and used. Um, it also buys some time to seek, kind of get the lay of the land of where things, of where things stand, because I can tell you right now, a number of cities and counties have opted out of the opioid statutes. Um, and we just paid, more will be opting out before June thirtieth. And certainly it affects um, that affects the state because there is a under at least one potential um, national settlement deal, that, the, the state would receive a base payment amount and it can potentially double that if it gets enough buy-in from cities and counties. So um, versus if it doesn't, um, then it, it loses out on the potential recovery. So um, bottom line, we're recommending that the town, as we've been recommending all clients to opt out. A- and as I said, the town has the op- opportunity to opt back in within sixty days should it desire uh, to do so. And I'm happy to answer any questions for the best of, for the best I can um, for many of the members.
Hey, thanks, Jonathan. Amy, anything you want to add to that? Amy Nooning?
No, not too much. No, John gave a great explanation there. Um, and I think the administration feels that opting out is the best option, particularly since we have, as John said, an option to opt back in if the lay of the land changes for some reason over the next sixty days.
Very good. Thanks, Amy. Sixty, six zero. Uh, council is a bit of a nuanced issue, but any questions on this for, for Amy or for Jonathan?
Yeah, if we opt out of this and we file our own individual lawsuit, what is the commitment of the town financially and operationally towards this? Um, because, uh, versus um, being part of the state suit, will we incur additional costs because we're filing a lawsuit separately? And then the second question I have off of that, a little related is, does this, does opting out, um, if the town opts out, does it somehow weaken the state's lawsuit against these manufacturers as well?
So, so let me answer that in two parts. Um, one, the, the town, the town has its own litigation pending right now against a number of opioid manufacturers, distributors and pharmacy depend, defendants. Those cases are, those, its case along with all of the cases filed in federal, the vast majority of cases filed in federal court uh, behalf of cities and counties is pending in what's called a multi-district litigation. Um, what basically consolidates all the lawsuits uh, before one judge. That's currently in the Northern District of Ohio. Um, the case is currently pending and it's not one of the cases currently being selected uh, to be worked up for trial. And there are trials ongoing right now across the country. Um, the state has sued, has only sued Purdue Pharma, uh, the Sackler family and what I call the big three distributors. That's McKesson, Marasource, Bergen and Johnson, and uh, McKesson, Marasource, Bergen and Cardinal Health. It has not sued other, uh, a number of other defendants that, that the town has sued, such as Johnson, Johnson and a number of, of pharmacy defendants, you, you know, your CVSes, that, that type of thing. So the, if, if the case, uh, obviously, if the town opts out and stays opt out, its case continues as, as it's been pending uh, in the court system. A- as I said, under at least one potential settlement deal, the state needs to obtain uh, enough critical mass, and we don't know exactly what that means, enough of cities and counties to be able to perceive the full amount to poten- um, under the settlement. Um, certainly if it doesn't receive that, then um, then the state would not receive its, its full potential amount of the settlement. So um, you know, at, at this point, opting out doesn't really, it doesn't really harm the town. It can, it, because of like, as Amy mentioned, as I've said, you, it can opt back in within sixty days. It really gives an opportunity just to kind of get away to land, see what, where things were, see who else has opted out. And uh, you know, maybe have an opportunity to, you know, into a win-win for, for everybody. Um, the state and the, and the local government. So I hope, hope that answers your question. Amy, feel free to chime in with, with anything else if, if you'd like.
John, do you know um, how long this litigation has been pending?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I don't, you know, when the town exactly filed suit, I, I don't have that number in front of me, but I mean, the litigation has been filed, at, at least our offices, you know, filed opioid lawsuits. Um, for example, we filed on behalf of Seaventon, Indianapolis back in November twenty seventeen and number of suits were filed before the state even jumped in. So the cities and counties have been at the forefront of, of this litigation.
John, can you, can you please tell the council um, just a little bit about what the process would look like if they were to decide to opt back in? What steps we would need to take to do that?
Sure. If, if the town elected to opt back in, it would be the same process as the opting out. It would need to pass a resolution um, within six, it, so if it adopted a resolution to opt out, it would have sixty days to pass a resolution opting back in if it desired to do so and then getting uh, copies of that to return to John's office. So it's the same process as opting out.
So, did I understand correctly, we already have our own independent lawsuits?
We, we filed, gosh, three or four years ago.
Okay.
And, and.
Twenty seventeen as well, just.
Yeah, it's part of a class action, right? Like, we're not filing individually. The legal bills you see today and claims, for example, are not related to this lawsuit.
Right.
It is a sort of a contingency, my understanding is a contingency-based lawsuit based on the expenses related to opioids.
It is a contingency ba- ba- based uh, based upon correct.
Okay.
I believe we did file suit individually, John. I, I believe all cities and towns in their individual capacities filed suit against the manufacturers. They were consolidated um, at the federal court level because of all the cases being similar in nature and the scene, and John's firm was handling a number of those cases. So um, we, so we do have a lawsuit in our individual name, and I think that's part of the opt-out um, procedure is that we would be able to get damages in our individual own name. So um, that, I think that's part of what is, is sort of being requested of you to opt out of the state of Indiana lawsuit. So currently, because it is a contingency fee basis, we've not been incurring, you know, sort of day-to-day legal fees.
So we would start if we opt out?
No.
Uh, no, it would stay the same. It's simply, it's simply based on how the settlement would come to the state of Indiana. So it's versus the state of Indiana receiving the settlement because the state is sued the, the large manufacturers and distributors and/or we are basically opting out as giving the town the ability to seek and receive its own damages directly without having to have state distribute whatever would come in as part of the settlement procedure.
I, I follow you now. The, the light bulb clicked on.
Yeah, so why, that's, that's why a lot of the communities are choosing to opt out, because if the state were to settle, I think John's point, if the state were to settle, it'd be unclear how those revenues would be distributed back to the individual cities and towns, A. Um, and B, they've only, they've, they've chosen to only sue certain litigants. So as the court looks to decide this case, uh, other courts may decide versus other uh, manufacturers and/or distributors. And so the state has limited its legal um, suit to only a few of the major ones. So this would allow you to potentially receive damages um, if it were awarded to uh, across multiple manufacturers. They'd individually be litigated, but it, it remains that, that door remains open.
I mean.
And, and to Alex's.
I was going to just add, the problem is that the statute says it's uh, you know, there's a, oh, all of the, the cities and counties that stay in the statute are, you know, are required, are bound by the statute. But they may, they may not, I mean, depending on, there's a possibility they may not participate in all, or receive funds uh, from all of the settlements. Um, because there's language in the statute that's talking about the uh, you know, who the state has sued by, by uh, by July first. And obviously the state has su- has only sued a, a handful of defendants, as I mentioned, versus the town has sued uh, uh, much more manufacturers and, and distribu- and dispenser pharmacy defendants.
Why, why did the state opt to only condense this down to a handful, if not three large manufacturers? And if they did settle with these three, would they still not have the opportunity to continue to pursue litigation with all the others? And I mean, I don't even know what, the, the, the list could be very robust of people who could be sued over this. And, and I don't know how many, you say the town, Josh, I don't know if you remember, how many people did we sue back then? I mean, was it dozens?
We sued more.
Yeah, but like, three or four more, fifteen more?
I don't know.
Uh, John, John would probably need to speak on it, but I, as I recall, the complaint, it listed basically anybody that manufactured opioids.
Yeah, so.
Like, on the average, other cities and towns have sued like twenty more.
Okay, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, and I'm sure the state and John, like, John, um, the, the state typically will limit who they sue because unlike a private litigation firm, I mean, they're limited in resources, so they'll go after the larger manufacturers. And I think they've set it up similar to the way, the way they did the tobacco litigation several years ago, back in the early two thousands. But John, I mean, you, you've been intimately involved in that, but usually it's a resource issue, just because.
I mean, I, I'm not going to get into, I mean, I, I would just be speculating if, you know, depending on the reasons of who the state has sued and not sued. So I just, I, I, you know, it, your guess was as good as mine on that. I can't just speak to that of, of why they've chosen uh, this way.
If we opt out, it's not like we're going to then go, okay, for these other fifteen who didn't settle, Zionsville is going to be assertively pursuing those other players.
It wouldn't be just Zionsville. Obviously, it's.
But there could be others.
Other towns and counties, or cities and counties that are involved. The, I think what we're trying to do is balance the benefits of um, opting out versus we, the possibility weakening the state's lawsuit against these manufacturers. And that's what it boils down to.
So Fishers and Noblesville also just opted out. I think a lot of communities are opting out because you have no guarantee of any money you're going to get from the state. The state may decide our expenses less legal costs cover the state's burden. Therefore, you, a local community, get nothing versus going direct and controlling your own destiny effectively.
Could we, if I'm not mistaken, the state has already decided that a lot, a large portion of this allocation will go to like the, the health department and other.
It was like eighty-five percent or something, wasn't it?
Yeah, so.
So it's, yeah, right now, the state, it, there would be fifteen percent directly to local governments uh, based on uh, per capita, fifteen to, to the state and then seventy percent control is uh, bundled or controlled through the FSSA.
Question for Heather, could we, could we stick with the state's lawsuit? And then with our own lawsuit, continue with the other, the other ones that we have, have uh, you know, let them sue those and then we can sue the, you know, remove the ones that they're suing and continue on with our suit as well separately so that both, both, everybody gets sued essentially.
Yeah, I don't believe so under the legislation. So what's prompting this decision for us is that there was legislation passed during the last um, session of the General Assembly that basically required communities to make this decision. So.
Okay.
Um, and I think it was to consolidate, and Amy and John have been more familiar with this. So um, in terms of the process, since particularly John's firm's been handling, you know, that process. But so the decision, I think, is really forced because of the new legislation that took effect.
Thank you.
Can I make um, motion dot, then, or is that in order at this?
Yeah, go ahead.
Make the motion to opt out um, of the uh, state's lawsuit.
Was that, who's, who's that going to add? I'm sorry. Oh, Counselor Burke. Very good. Uh, all in favor?
Hi.
All opposed? Resolution twenty twenty-one dash ten passes with a vote of seven in favor, zero opposed. Um, before claims, any other matters, counselors? All right, we've got approval of claims. Any, any questions on claims that were submitted?
Uh, I've, I've got a couple of questions on claims, um, specifically with the um, the purchase cards that we have. Um, I was just going back and maybe we can get, um, yeah, Tammy, thank you very much. Uh, I was just going back to like, went back to eight or August of last year when we passed the, the ordinance for the cards. Um, and in, in that meeting, we were, we talked about um, you know, that they were designed for purchases and um, you know, so we don't have to reimburse people for expenses. Um, and then one of the, one of the areas that we focused on was, was basically eliminating the redundancy of having someone write a check using employee hours and, you know, that kind of stuff. I'm a little, I'm a little bit confused specifically on this set of claims. We've got, um, I know every, the, the hot, hot item is legal fees and uh, we've paid forty-eight thousand dollars to one firm on the credit card and that same firm were actually, there's a request for thirty-six thousand dollars that's directly billed to them. Um, there's a print, a print company on here as well that is receiving both a credit card statement and an individual claim. I guess I'm just, I'm, I'm curious if we're, if we're using the cards as they were originally intended and um, it seems like instead of streamlining the process and, and building inefficiencies with the cards, it seems like we're doing the opposite of that.
Yes, I can address that. Um, on the legal fee specifically, um, I talked to Council Legal and they thought that the legal expenses might be better to go through check only. So one of the legal had already gone through the um, through the purchase card. And so going forward, we will do the rest of it by check. And so that's on advice of Council Legal, and so that's the direction that we took on that specific one. On the print company, I'm not as familiar with that one, but um, I'd be happy to look at that and then get back to you on that.
Yeah, so, so I, I appreciate that. I, I think the, when I look at the payments um, that we even referenced there, um, it looks like the, the payment specifically to, you know, for example, Witsit and Nooning, there's some that are being requested to Witsit and Nooning on six fifteen, but then a payment on the credit card on six sixteen. So it seems like if we were going to rectify that and pay them directly as opposed to using the card, those two dates would have been flip-flopped.
So the dates on the purchase card are reflected as the date that it's on the import into the system. So that date filed is just um, an entry date. It is not reflective of, of an actual payment date. So the payment for the purchase card, you will see that on the second meeting of the council and that will not be paid until after the council meeting. So the payment dates would be on the right-hand side, um, where it says check date. And you'll notice that the purchase cards have not been paid and then checks are generally cut after the council meeting. So they'd be cut today.
Checks to the purchase card vendor?
Checks to the purchase card vendor um, happen, I believe, on the twenty-fifth of the month, thereabouts. Um, the rest of them would be cut after the council meeting. So on the days that we have the morning meetings, we would process the checks on that day. On the, the days that we have council meetings in the evening, they would be processed next day.
Do we, purchases already, I'm sorry, James, go ahead.
Well, I'm just going to ask if there's a limit to the transaction amount? And is there a limit to the monthly? It, it just seemed, it seems like the, uh, and maybe it's just me, um, but it just seems like the, you know, you're, you're the, the ink's out of the printer and we got to go to Best Buy instead of waiting for our distributor was kind of how this was presented as opposed to paying contractually for services for the town. I, I just feel like it's a little bit, um, I don't know that it, it was presented this way initially.
So if you recall, um, one of the big benefits of using the purchase card is to get a rebate back. So just from that short few months of spend, we've received over twenty-five thousand, or twenty-five, twenty-five hundred dollars in rebate. And so um, we're actually making money, more money, spending money than in the bank, right? Um, and so we do want more utilization of that purchase card spend. And so by having the transactions, whether it be a Best Buy or contractual, having that spend on that P card, and this is a state program, so the state of Indiana as well as other cities and towns opt into it. And that increases our um, the pool. And so that pooled dollar amount of spend is, can increase the percentage of rebate that we get back. So it's based on our spend as the town of Zionsville, as well as the spend of the pooled um, all cities, towns, state of Indiana.
So I think, I think where, where I go, where I get lost in the, in the card scenario is um, the, in the ordinance, you know, the ordinance talks about still having to go through the uh, presented. the in the ordinance, you know, the ordinance talks about still having to go through the presented town council for approval. And, you know, these cards are something that obviously I think Counselor Trailer used the example last time. If you go to Lowe's and use your card, you you've used it, whether you've paid for it or not. And it seems like this is if we have a discrepancy with claims, if we have a a question about what we're paying and what it's being used for, our only recourse is to file a fraud claim on the card. I'm I'm curious as to whether or not we could, I don't know if we revise the ordinance to allow certain things or or if we're just I don't know, I just, I'm I'm having a hard time. It feels like we're we're paying things before we're approving them, and there's no way to.
Yeah. Well, I'm glad we're making money, right? I I think it's a balance between that and claims has turned from, here's what we're going to spend to, here's what we've spent. And that is there there could be a perception there that's probably untrue, but there could be a perception that things are getting spent before council really has a say because it's already really been spent. And now it's much, it's much more problematic to say, gosh, we shouldn't have spent that thousand dollars. How do we get it back versus, well, let's just not write that check. So I think Counselor Plunkett's point, not to speak for you, but the card, I think, does have good benefits, and I think it is great we get a rebate, but I just want to be cognizant or keep dialogue going on when it should be used and when it shouldn't be used.
So a lot of the things that we are purchasing on the purchase card are for services rendered, and and maybe Heather can can help speak to that, that we have items that are in our budget that have been approved for the departments to spend. And all this spend with the purchase cards goes through the department head. So whoever the cardholder is, there's an approval process within the town to make sure that it goes to the right line item. It's a budgeted expense and things like that before it comes to you.
Right. And 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 I mean, I think this also started with the the legal fees, which appreciate correcting, but it starts becoming a slippery slope too, right? Where I just want to make sure that all the checks are in place when the card is being used for things outside of what I would consider the norm, right? So, like I said, legal's a great first step. I think, and again, not to speak for Jason, I think it's just being aware that there is some concern there about how often it gets used and why it gets used, just so you're aware of it. And and you know, nothing to change now, but just just wanted you aware.
I think one, I mean, we we still have the ability to monitor it so that if things fall outside or we start noticing as with the legal expense, that things falling outside of what we feel the intended use is, we can come back and I doubt we're gonna try to claw back a thousand dollars here and a thousand dollars there, but if if there are large items that we feel that it's something to kind of monitor further, then we would bring it up as a question as we did with the legal expense. The second part of it, I I'm guessing that it's because of the rebate. I I'm making the assumption that the legal expenses were put on the card or?
Yes, I mean, the higher that our pooled expenses are, then the higher our rebate to the town is. Yes.
So so is there a process we can, I mean, I want to get the rebate, right? Is there a process to be put in place to say, I don't mind putting it on the card, but I want, I'd want it put, I think I'd want the council approval and then put on the card, right? Versus being put on the card, then council.
More of a requisition process.
Right. If you can flip-flop that, then I have no problem with anything going on the card, right? Because then maximize the rebate all day long. It just, when it's put on the card and then comes for approval, it's sort of backwards from what the intention of the fiscal body in approving the claim turns into.
Is there a certain dollar amount that, I mean, we could talk after, that you would want that requisition-type process and then?
Maybe, and and again, we can talk about that off, and not, Jason, this has been, I know, something you've been concerned about. Maybe is that something you want to work with Tammy on to figure it out?
I think if we could get just a list of, and this is where I was going with the ordinance, maybe just a list of these are things that we want to be, we want to put on the card, you know, legal and and there's some other fees for you know, continuing education and that kind of stuff. Like, these are gonna be the big-ticket items and the rest of those things, Starbucks, Rush, all that stuff, you know, that's that's a different.
Yeah, that doesn't, that doesn't matter.
But to have the big ones, to know this is going to happen every single month, and we all are in, you know, in in favor of that happening, I think would be good for me.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, Tammy, if you can help with that, that would be great, too. Any other questions on claims?
Is is the rebate, I I haven't seen the rebate actually on the claims.
It it's a revenue to us.
So it's, it's, okay, so we can see that on what document?
So that would be just our our regular revenue-type reports. So that's the transparency portal that we're working on to get up and running with the new system, and then you will have visibility into revenues, expenses, budget to actual and and things like that. So that's the reporting that we're working on right now with our vendor.
And and what's our timeline for that completion?
So by October is when we have the budgeted option, so I'm hoping to have things up and running by then.
Is there is there something that we can do to help you to get that ready for the budgeting timeframe for this year? Is there is there anything we can do as a council to help you with that?
Not at this time. Thank you, though.
That's all.
All right. Any motions on claims?
A motion to approve?
First one, Counselor Culp.
Second.
Second, Counselor Choi. All in favor? All opposed? Claims are approved by a vote of seven in favor, zero opposed. I will make a motion to adjourn.
I will second.
Second from Counselor Culp, all in favor?
Hi.
All opposed? Motion to adjourn is approved by a vote of seven in favor, zero opposed. The next regular town council meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, July sixth, twenty twenty-one, at seven o'clock PM, right here in the council chambers, as well as electronically via Zoom. Note the date shift due to the Independence Day holiday. File notice will be posted in compliance with Indiana Open Door Law. Thank you all.